And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with good will and just.
Thank you, have a seat. Will you proceed with your call?
All right. Ronald Knuff is absent. Kenneth Hall.
Present.
Bonnie Almond is absent. Trevor Stone.
Here.
Ronald Glassik.
Here.
Judith Haldeman.
Here.
Jason Donahue.
Present.
Judy Kutzler.
Here.
Mayor Tony Prestash.
Present.
And Mason Small.
Present.
Moving on to hearing of persons present, step up to the microphones, state your name. And talk to us.
Good evening, Madam President.
Thank you.
Members of council, Mr. Mayor, my name is Vio Gallo, I'm the principal of a consulting firm, business consulting firm, BGG Consulting, based in Whitehall.
Can you talk into the microphone?
Sure.
Raise the mic up or pull it out.
A little higher.
Mr. Gallo, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm here, I do small business consulting and government relations, I'm here representing Mr. Joseph Kumbow, Mr. Greg Marzano with SV Imperial Realty. And we're here to ask for the borough to be an applicant for the Main Street Matters Program, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Program, hopefully all of you have a copy of it. The Main Street Matters Program is important to what we consider anchor buildings in the Commonwealth, and especially to my client's building, North Main Avenue, twenty-one oh-two, North Main Avenue in Northampton. I think all of you may know it as the Cement Bank Building. It was previously occupied by PNC Bank, it's been vacant for a quarter of a time. So our request is to ask the borough to serve as a public sector applicant for the Main Street Matters Grant Program. Currently offered by the Commonwealth, the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development. Specifically, the District Development Grant, and then also the Accessible Housing Grant under that program. The borough's application would support the private development or mixed-use project located at the Cement Bank Building. It has two components, the district development would allow us to apply for a grant for the renovation and restoration of the building, an anchor building in the Northampton community. A private dollar match of more than a million dollars would be provided by the owner. And then secondly, the accessible housing portion would provide a match of three hundred thousand dollars to renovate and make accessibility improvements to multiple apartments within the building. So that would greatly aid citizens with physical disabilities. The Main Street Matters Grant requires the project to be an anchor building in the community. It's been in the community since nineteen oh-one, it's been in the neighborhood. I would think that due to its location, its proximity to other Main Street buildings, everyone would agree here that it is an anchor in the community. The borough does not have a formal Main Street program or an organization that is like a five-oh-one C-three nonprofit that could be an applicant. So that's why we're asking the borough itself to be a public applicant, it's totally lawful by the guidelines. This is a missed opportunity for the borough, I think. This is a program that the state has run for a few years now, and it greatly aids businesses in their decision-making on where to locate within the Commonwealth. So they have choices, want them to come to Beaufort, Northampton Borough, keep the Main Street vibrant, and keep, you know, folks coming to the borough to inspire economic development. Since PNC left, you know, many of you know that they employed quite a few in that building, and it has been vacant. But, you know, all property taxes are up to date, and the building's in, you know, in great order, but obviously, you know, with the implementation of rehabilitation project, we would need to, you know, a little bit of assistance through this program. What I will say is that the project will bring considerable economic development to the borough, right? There's temporary construction jobs, permanent jobs is a component of the plan which includes ground floor retail space. There's a direct economic development impact to the borough, to the state through sales tax and jobs, indirect economic development to the nearby Main Street businesses. As I said earlier, there's a private sector match of at least one point three million, that's an investment in the community, and then also with the state's investment, the possibility for successful. This could be an investment of over three point five million into the Northampton Borough community. And the state grant dollars could be the first of many, right? This is just one program that DCED offers, but, you know, it's a good step in the right direction. There's also local EIT dollars that can be gained from the residents and businesses in the building, and also state personal income tax. It's consistent with the Lehigh Valley Planning Commission need for housing units in Lehigh Valley, or underserved. It offers an adaptive reuse of an older commercial site in the Lehigh Valley and Pennsylvania, so we checked a lot of boxes with this program. You know, of course, we'll go through the borough zoning and planning committees with the various architects and engineers and plenty of lawyers too. But tonight, we're not here to ask for that, we're just simply here to ask for the borough's resolution to move forward as an applicant for the program. So, you know, I would be happy to answer any questions about the particulars of the building, and also Greg, or for Mr. Kumbow's here. But at this point, it doesn't really commit the borough to anything but being the public applicant. We would work with the borough manager to facilitate it, so, you know, we would, there's no cost for the application, but we would need the borough information, like the EI, and number, and other various information from the borough that is, you know, obviously held strictly confidential.
So we're can, if I may?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
So we're gonna basically step in as the Main Street partner, though you're saying the borough has to sign off on that because there is no Main Street?
No, no, it just commits the borough as the actual applicant, so we would do all the work, we just need the borough's information to actually apply.
And it doesn't bind us to anything?
No, it doesn't bind you, I mean, we would hope that, you know, we get the grant.
Yeah, I have a lot of questions.
Okay, thank you.
Let's start with the questions.
I do. Um, first and foremost, just in terms of these grants and the match requirements, certainly, the borough would not be incurring any cost.
Certainly, we would agree with that. All of the match is that's required by the program is private match, private sector match.
Okay. Now.
That would be a big ask if we were.
That's a huge ask, and I just wanted everyone to hear that.
Considering the ceiling.
Right, right. And.
We are clearly not asking for matching.
You're a private entity, you're going to be making a profit with this project, you're looking for the borough to be an applicant, to get you grant funds that you can use.
To renovate the building.
To renovate the building.
Sorry, finish your sentence, yeah.
No, that's fine, that's fine. So with that, though, the borough would be party to a, an agreement relative to that grant with DCED.
That is correct.
And would have responsibilities thereunder.
That, that is correct.
So how would you propose to protect the borough?
Well, I don't think protect is the right word, there's no, there's no protection that's necessary, it's an agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the Department of Community and Economic Development. So we would simply work with the borough manager or the assigned staff to, you know, accomplish all of the items under, it's a contract.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, would not be a cost to the borough, would not be a burden on the borough, I mean, I think this is done, you know, across Pennsylvania in order to participate. You have to have a working relationship between the borough and the Commonwealth.
Right.
So, Department of Community and Economic Development, Lehigh Valley rep, her name is Fadia Holma, she has visited the building, and she gave us the go-ahead to go ahead and apply.
Okay.
So we've gotten, you know, already started that working relationship with her, otherwise, we wouldn't even be standing here tonight if she didn't think it was worth the project for this program.
Excellent, I'm glad to hear that.
And I will also add that our state representative and our state senator are due to tour the building, and they've already shown initial support for getting this building back up and running, so it's big. So, we have some steps in the right direction, we just need your, your support. So what that means is that we need a resolution, and I can provide the language, I've already provided Brian with some samples, he gave you a sample of the resolution. And, you know, we would hope that you would move it forward. What I would also say is that, um, one additional thing per your question, the borough would have to provide its latest financials. So if you've had an audit done, I think that's pretty standard for every state agency, if you're gonna do business with them, they wanna know that you're in good standing, and, you know, you're not a distressed community, and maybe actually more will come your way if you were, but it's, it's good that you're not.
Let me just add that, I was invited. I was invited by these three gentlemen to visit and work with them to build something that is a great addition to Northampton at that building. I know this team right here has a definite interest in staying in Northampton and building up that corner. That, that building is a battleship building in this town, it's a historic building, it has always been a centerpiece of our uptown. The commercial aspect is very exciting, and with the addition of just a few more apartments, I think, with the land and everything there, it would be a welcome addition to the uptown. I could imagine the view on the third floor from the apartments that they're, however, the commercial aspect is one of the big pluses that is looking to come in here to complete our uptown. Now, we had a bank before, that was all well and good, but it didn't bring a lot of people out to the uptown. The plans they have and the vision they're looking towards, as I see it, is that they wanna bring that and continue to have a vibrant uptown Northampton as we had back in the sixties and seventies, where people do look at that as a destination spot. I gathered just the feelings from them that where their heart is on this project, and I know they've invested a lot of time, I was present when they made the call to Fadia with the DCED, and she was very positive about them applying for the grant, given the size of the building, the location, and the fact that geez, six or seven thousand cars go past that location every day. So there is a big plus for the borough here, and I'm happy to work with them to look to facilitate bringing a commercial entity in there. In fact, during street fair, I was at one of the vendors, and they mentioned that, hey, we're looking for a place in Northampton for this business, do you have any idea? I pointed right to the PNC Bank, okay, and they were very excited about that opportunity to use that bank for a business. So people are looking for a great space with high traffic flow, and a good community that supports their businesses, and something that they have all the room for, the parking is there, the building is sound, and it's just a positive addition. I, I know, you know, with the resolution, there's always questions and some temerity in signing something like that, but there is absolutely no cost to the borough about this, okay? That is a plus, and again, I mentioned that Main Street Matters Program is coming to Northampton, there's other businesses that are gonna wanna get involved in this, and this is the first of probably, hopefully, many people that come forward to take advantage of this grant, as many are doing across the state. I mentioned at the last meeting, the PSAB Borough News Magazine had the governor on the front page in Hummels Town with the signed right at his dais, Main Street Matters Program, so the governor is out there promoting this even. And I think this is a great opportunity for Northampton to step in this, and just assist in saying, yes, go ahead with the loan, we wanna see this building up and running and providing us a tax base and better community quality of life, so.
Thank you for that, Mayor.
You're welcome.
And tell the commitment that the mayor has for the borough and for its Main Street in particular, and these are opportunities that, you know, as I said, to attract investment and to get the state to invest in our local communities. And I think, I know for a fact that other Lehigh Valley communities are very interested in it, and it'll be a competitive process, but we hope to do well for, for our, our Northampton.
Thank you, Mr. Gallo.
One last question, how much, again, are you looking to invest into this building in your money?
We ballpark, it's over three and a half million that we would, I don't know, let's see, for.
Okay, but say.
Three point seven.
So you're, you wanna invest over one point three million in the borough of Northampton, is that what you're, is that what I'm hearing?
That's one point three million of the state's money, and then, of course, you know, private match would, the total project cost, we estimate to be about three point seven five.
Okay.
Maybe a little higher by the time we get, you know, we get at it.
But you're, you wanna invest over a million dollars in the borough of Northampton?
Absolutely, absolutely. It's, it's a one-to-one match anyway, so it's required.
I thank Mr. Kumbow for choosing Northampton to make that investment, let, let's make this happen, please.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Consider the request for handicapped parking space.
A resident in the five hundred block of East Twelve Street has requested a handicap space. Chief Kadingo is recommending approval.
Do I have a motion to honor this request?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Donahue, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Hall, any questions?
Question.
Go ahead, Mr. Glassik.
More for, more for the chief, is there a garage behind him? There's no garage, okay.
Absolutely not, yeah.
Okay, that's my only question, man, I thought there was.
It's an overgrown shed.
Oh.
Picking up a motor section there.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider request of the Lehigh Valley Community Benefit.
The Lehigh Valley Community Benefit is requesting assistance with traffic control for the fourteenth annual Tucker's Toy Run. The ride is scheduled for Saturday, November second, with a rain date of Sunday, November third. The ride begins at noon, and the route is included in your packet. In the, in past years, our fire police has assisted with this event.
Do I have a motion to honor this request?
Yeah, motion to approve.
And Mr. Stone, second?
Second.
Second, and Mr. Donahue? I have a question. Mr. Hall, do you have enough people to work that?
I will, as usual, require the police as well, I know they're busy on the road, but it don't take a lot to do it, and I have men, I've been having this on the calendar a lot, but I'm down to five men when I use that fifteen.
Right.
So, uh, dry-bys, this isn't gonna work, if they're available, I'm gonna need, you know, some assistance, so. I, I don't see a, I, I mean, it's a fifteen-minute thing.
Okay.
At like two, three intersections, but, and we have intentions of one, so I'll do the best I can, as usual.
So we should, so we should honor this?
Yeah, that's fine.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Consider the appointment of the Pension Plan Chief Administrator, Administrative Officer, thank you.
With the retirement of Leroy Broke, council needs to appoint a chief administrative officer for the three existing pension plan. In the past, the borough manager served in this capacity, Mr. Wellsco and myself is willing to serve in this capacity.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Do you have a motion to appoint, sir?
Motion to appoint.
Yeah, motion to appoint, I'm sorry.
I need a motion to appoint Brian Wellsco as Pension Plan Chief Administrative Officer.
I have a motion by Mr. Stone to appoint Mr. Wellsco, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Haldeman? Any questions? All those in favor?
I do have a question, I'm sorry.
Do you have a question? Go ahead, please.
May for the solicitor answer, is there not a conflict of interest that he sits on that be appointed for things that he's actually benefiting from too?
So this is for, again?
The pension.
It's for the three pension plans, yes.
The pension plan. I don't know that any, yeah, I mean, you certainly could make that argument. Um, so any employee would potentially, that's receiving a pension, yeah, would be potentially.
I just was asking, that's fine, 'cause we did it in the past, I didn't mean we had to do it going forward, but I see the reason I was questioning it, but I do see why somebody should be on there that's also skinning the game, if you wanna say. I was looking on the, the other side, so it's not a conflict of interest.
So, you would be the chief administrative officer?
Of the three pension plans.
Of the three pension plans.
Yeah, so with the police pension account, the defined contribution and the defined benefit accounts.
And what duties would you have in that role?
It's mostly signing documents, authorizing, so for instance, when we have to do like, we get the payments in, signing those, when, soon we're gonna have to, we just received the check for, from the state, for the pension. Assigning those, writing the letters, signing off on the letters based off of what our pension company, Foster and Foster, says where to put the money.
And you have any decisional role in that capacity?
No, they, we, it is reached, Foster and Foster tells us where the money goes, and then I just write a letter saying.
Okay.
That's a like, that was a great way to ask it, you know, do.
I see it more or less as an extension of the borough manager's responsibility.
Yes.
Authorization to sign stuff in that, yeah, that's fine.
And I would, I would actually, I would trust the borough manager to facilitate that much more than someone not, yeah.
An outside person, absolutely.
I'm glad we worked through that, though, I think that it's, you know, it's good to ask those questions, and it's good to make sure that everybody understands exactly the scope of what you would be doing, and that there is no conflict.
Sure. Absolutely.
And with no disrespect to.
Oh, no, I didn't take it that way, I, I completely understand.
You know, it's not bad.
No, this, I get it.
I thought we'd have to make Mr. Serençic the person.
Well, you don't get a pension too.
Same thing. I'll be the obvious back.
For, for an employee or.
Exactly, you'd be the back.
That was meant for levity, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to reports from committees, starting with Administration and Finance, Mr. Hall.
Thank you. We have received a donation in the amount of twenty-five hundred dollars to the Atmos Cement Museum from Heidelberg Materials U.S. Cement LLC. The first payroll was completed with the new ISOL system, the second one is currently underway, and there was a total of ninety-five live stream views of the September nineteenth council meeting, end of report.
Thank you. Building land and recreation, Ms. Haldeman.
Thank you. We received the replacement piece for the previously damaged playground equipment at Nissel Park, unfortunately, the new piece we received was dented, and we are in contact with the manufacturer to have it replaced. A meeting was held on Tuesday, October first, at the Forest Street Playground with the representatives from the Cindy Miles Adaptive Fund, George Eli Associates, Brian Wellsco, our borough manager, our assistant borough manager, Jerry Serençic, Rich Ackerman, our public works supervisor, and committee representatives were in attendance. End of, and I assume we'll talk about that a little bit more during my report, so, end of, end of report.
Code and Police, Mr. Stone.
Yes, thank you. Several applications were submitted for the open zoning officer position, interviews will be scheduled within the next few weeks. On Saturday, October fifth, the Civil Service Commission will be conducting the agility and written portions of the civil service test, good luck to all the applicants. On Thursday, October tenth, the zoning hearing board will hear the appeal of twelve forty-nine Newport Avenue LLC for constructing a covered entrance, exterior stairwell, and elevator per building code, end of report.
Thank you. Fire and Health, Mrs. Almond, but she's not here. Mr. Donahue, would you read them, please?
Certainly. A copy of the health officer's report from May through September is included in your packet. The fire department will host an open house on Wednesday, October ninth, from five PM to eight PM, end of report.
Thank you. Public Works and Sewer, Mr. Glassik.
Thank you. The crew of Public Works employees recently cleaned out the community centers upstairs and downstairs, or both. A big thank you for them getting it done in one day, 'cause there was a massive amount of stuff that was at that place that needed to be done, so thank you for the great job. The Canal Street eleven-twenty grant projects are almost ready for bid, end of report.
Thank you. Moving on to reports from council members, I'll start with Mr. Hall.
Okay, thank you. I really have nothing other than to add, and I was just looking it up here, the inaugural breakfast for the fire department is gonna be on November tenth. The hours, let me pull it up, or, well, the advertising, they're planning to have them monthly, the cost of stuff, everything is on Facebook, it's online, the advertising is going out, so try to put it out there. It's another way the fire department's trying to make money towards equipment, everything else that they're doing down there, a lot of other expenses, they've spent lots of time and money. We're putting in a totally commercial-grade kitchen, sort of the short little breakfast nook that was there when the building was constructed, and that's all it was built for. So, make it the time, come down, have some breakfast, all you can eat, buffet, join, come down, check out the department, see what else is going on, as well as the open house on thing, feel free, they always put on a good show for the, the open house, which is the tenth of this month, end of report.
Thank you. Mr. Stone.
So you have to buy tickets ahead of time, yeah?
Yeah, at the door.
Okay, all right. I'm interested. Oh, same. I like my breakfast.
I'll come up to the calls in a second, I just gotta put it up while you're talking.
Yeah, all right, sign me up. I really have much, I just wanted to thank Heidelberg Cement for the donation to the Atlas Museum. It's, it's nice to see the, the support toward the Atlas Museum, so, that's all, end of report.
Thank you. Ms. Haldeman.
Thank you, and I only to have a little bit of a comment about the meeting at the Forest Street Playground, just to kind of keep that on everybody's mind, it was a great meeting, they have some, and I wanted to bring it tonight, and of course, I ran out of the house late. Some drawings of what is projected as a, a starting layout for the playground, and I think I just wanna keep it on the community's mind as they will be looking for support. And, and even some, you know, possible, possible funding, some donations to this park, which will only, again, enhance our public parks, I think that it will really become our premier park here in town as, as it begins. And we have enough property over there, I believe, to really maybe do it in phases, but the starting one with the, again, accessible to all children with disabilities and our typical, typically developing children here in the community, I think will find this to be a beautiful park. We talked about a paved area to learn how to ride bicycles, you know, garden areas, I think that the Cindy Miles group have some really wonderful ideas, and they've really given Northampton a nice opportunity to, to build on our park system. So I really want our community to, to be aware of it, and, and hopefully, they will become involved, and we'll find people who might wanna kind of join in and maybe make some, you know, donations in kind as time goes on, and we find that we may need that. It's not going to be a, a, you know, a cheap project, but they are, they are fully committed to this in our, in our town, and I think we are very fortunate, and I will say that a lot, that we are very fortunate that they selected us, 'cause I think it really will benefit a lot of children here in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your work on that, that's very kind of you.
It's, it's an enjoyment to, to do something that, that positive.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Wellsco?
Yes, sir.
The Lobok Underpass there, is it possible to put yield signs like on the ten street one, even though ten street has one lane, people act as the Lobok one is one lane. Uh, like if a UPS truck's coming, you're gonna lose, but people fly through there. My son almost had his car taken off by Lady Mercedes the other day, so I heard, had to hear about that. So, that's first things first. Other thing, here's a picture of our favorite address, one oh-seven, one oh-nine Lobok Avenue. The arrow on top is where the roof is collapsing in, the arrow on the bottom is actually the underside trim you see popping off, can we have somebody look at that property for safety and health concerns?
Yep, you got it.
'Cause I was also told by one of his workers, the inside of the house is full of black mold.
Okay.
And that's the end of my report, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Glassik?
A couple of things, nothing, nothing major, I do think that Victor Gallo, is it?
Vito.
Vito Grio, I'm sorry about that. Thank you for the great report, I should say, I still have maybe myself, my feelings is, what is the majority of the? maybe myself, my feelings is, what is the majority of the commercial retail space compared to something like the amount of, or a few apartments? You know, what are we looking at ratio wise, or is that still haven't been discussed?
It's still in development, but
Okay.
we, we were talking primarily that the ground floor.
Would be retail.
Which is about four thousand.
Oh. That's a, thank you.
Thirteen would be commercial, and that would be residential.
Okay. You know, I just don't wanna see that flip around, 'cause we, we, right now, we are struggling with the amount of apartments that we're getting in, and not parking spaces for that, the infrastructures for it. Not to discourage it, but it's, just wanna make sure that we're not committing to something that we don't really understand what the exact ratio was. Um, but thank you again for the report, it was detailed. And I think the Main Street Matters Program is something that we can take advantage of hugely. I was a big supporter of Main Street programs with the Chamber, so it's not a program that is looked at lightly, it's very successful. Um, uh, as Councilwoman, Haldeman said, I was also at the Cindy Miles, uh, Adaptive Fund Playground, it is just, I mean, we have to get more people involved as community, as residents, to see this program and see what it can do for our community, because it's gonna be state of the art. I'm familiar with how these parks that they have out in Colorado, where my, my family lives, and the parks out there, it's just amazing. You don't understand what it would do for our park over there. We have the space, we have the commitment from this organization, and I think we just need residents to get behind it. And you may see, I know you'll see myself out there, and I think I can speak for Ms. Haldeman, handing out flyers as much as we can, because we need to get businesses involved, supported from the fences to the macadam, to the equipment, the businesses that wanna come in town, we have to have them support us and help us, because again, it makes our town that much better. So, I just think that's a great organization, and, end of my report.
Well, thank you. Nathan?
Uh, at this current moment, I have nothing new to report to council.
Nothing? You don't wanna make it up? No? Okay. Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I think Mr. Councilman Glassick said it best about Northampton growing and really moving forward. If, if you just sit back for a second, we have a autumn is here now, and, uh, it's a black and orange month. We have a great parade coming up, which is a Lehigh Valley classic on the seventeenth. And we also have our trick or treat night, which every year I, I see more and more families and people out trick or treating in the neighborhoods, and, uh, thank you to all the families who open their doors and, and take care of the kids. So we have that going. Now we have a gentleman here who wants to invest over a million dollars in our downtown to help our economy grow and to build a, a vibrant, uh, commercial space. And we have, uh, like hats off to Councilman, Councilwoman Haldeman for the playground that we're looking at Forest Street, which, uh, I happen to be a part of that. It is gorgeous. It is everything you'd want in a playground. We have plenty of space there, we have room to grow, we have room to just make it another destination in Northampton. So, uh, the blessings keep coming to this town, and i- it's people up here that are making it happen, and I'm proud to be working with them, and thank you for all your time, but we are continuing to grow. Uh, I look forward to more and more of the growth that we haven't had for a long time, with a new Borough Manager in place and his assistant. Uh, i- it's impressive, the ideas that are coming up now, that uh, will move this town forward and completely upgrade the quality of life we have here in Northampton, so. Uh, let's count our blessings, e- enjoy the parade on the seventeenth. For those who tune in here for the meetings, we're gonna be here Wednesday, the sixteenth, instead of that Thursday. And I, I look forward to seeing everyone at the parade and, uh, working again with Ms. Quombo and his team to bring a, a really great viable business into the PNC Bank, which, uh, has been a beautiful constructed bank. If you look at the architecture on that bank, uh, I know he's looking to do a power wash on it and bring it back to its historic, uh, start. Uh, over a hundred years of business and, uh, centerpiece for that building, and again, improving our playground system where people will get outdoors, will enjoy the town, and, and make things more of a community for everyone. So, thank you for that, and that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Steph, Stephanie Stewart, please.
Full name, thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to state that prior to tonight's council meeting, council met for an executive session um, to, to discuss property and employment matters. Just wanted to place that on the record, and with respect to, um, the presentation by Mr. Gallo and S V Imperial Realty this evening, certainly, if, if the Borough were interested in moving ahead, um, there would need to be a motion to resolve to apply for the grants. Um, so I wanted to put that out there, if that is something that um, anybody would be looking to do tonight. And my final item of business that I wanted to make you aware of is that, um, there are two bills, uh, in the General Assembly right now that would, if passed, affect, um, Northampton Borough. Oh, I'll give you the original bill numbers. I think, they change throughout the process, but I'm talking specifically about House Bill, uh, nineteen seventy-six and House Bill twenty forty-five. House Bill nineteen seventy-six, um, would actually amend the municipality's planning code to require multiple unit dwellings and mixed-use residential developments, including multiple unit dwellings on lots located in commercial zoning districts. Um, and, and that is in municipalities of ten thousand or more, so that would affect uh, Northampton. And House Bill twenty forty-five, uh, would do essentially the same thing, require multifamily housing, um, in zones that, uh, on any lot which is zoned for single-family housing under the MPC. So it actually, and again, that's for boroughs of ten thousand or more, so that's actually, um, our, our Commonwealth Legislature looking to limit what municipalities can do in terms of their own zoning and planning, to require you to accept multifamily, uh, dwellings in places where they are not permitted now. So I, I just wanted to make you aware of it. Um, other municipalities are um, passing resolutions, speaking out against, um, these bills, and I, I just wanna make you aware of it, if you have any questions, if that is something that, um, the Borough, the, the council would be interested in pursuing by resolution. If we're in opposition, we can certainly do that.
Any further? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Can we have a question? What would your recommendation as our solicitor, to signing a resolution, or making a resolution?
With regard to these two bills?
Yes.
Absolutely. I, I, I think that, um, as an attorney, I don't like the idea of the MPC being amended to restrict municipalities.
That's what it is, okay.
With respect to their, their zoning.
With that being said, can we still, is it still open enough to make a resolution? Or to make a request for a resolution to be signed for these? Or does that have to be something we have to have the full document or something?
Uh, not tonight, kinda, you know?
Would you wanna do it? You could, you could do it at the next meeting, next meeting.
Okay, that's fine, then. I'll just add, request that it'll be on the docket for the next meeting.
Is it possible, will there be a motion called on Mr. Gallo's?
Uh, we, that would be for next meeting also.
Okay.
I think it's something we need to look at.
Understand.
Under, read, read the brochure and understand, okay? Um, 'cause I saw something, I wouldn't, you're saying that there would be no cost to the Borough, but in here, it says we're responsible for fifty percent.
And that was the point of my question. I wanted you to hear that, in fact, they would be providing that, that funding.
Page five.
Yeah.
Provided by a private agency, not the Borough.
Okay.
I knew that would be a question, which is why I put that out there.
Well, I, I would like to look at the brochure. I think that most, uh, of us on council would like to read your brochure.
It's, it's important to do your due diligence, and I, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Was that the Commonwealth's guidelines, the brochure, your, it's the guidelines for the program from issued by the Commonwealth?
Thank you. It's just, I wanna be able to read that. 'Cause that's the first thing that caught my eye, is that fifty percent. We need an approval to pay the bills. I need a motion.
Motion to pay the bills.
By Mr. Stone, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mr. Donahue.
Just a few.
Do I have questions?
Yeah, just a few.
Okay. I'm ready.
I mean, it was, it's getting harder to get these so late. If we can get a day before, I would really love it, but I know it's tough.
It's, it's hard right now because payroll and APs in the same week. Come November, it'll be easier.
So, forgive me if I have this wrong, some of them, but first of all, thank you for the, anybody putting more descriptions on their, our bills, because you can notice that now, a little bit of things that avoids questions, because you can tell what they're for.
Sure.
So that was a very nice touch. Um, First Regional Compost, ten thousand dollars, page one.
Page one, First Regional Compost.
Oh, yeah, it's the, it's Perka over on Weaversville Road. It's a, we, quarterly payment. It allows all the residents in town to use that. It's a multi municipality.
Okay.
Involved with it.
Alright. Um, I think we talked about this enough times, and maybe you told me what their contract date is, but Frazier Advance Equipment Services?
Yeah.
Another fifteen hundred dollars this month?
Yep, that's just the standard contract, great, yeah.
There was one cha- one charge for thirteen ninety-five, another one for one twenty-three.
Yeah, so the, it's broken out by different, technically, they're considered three different vendors, because different bills go to different of their plants or their headquarters area. So the one for the account that's in four oh two is for admin. Uh, four oh six is, that part is broken out to the sewer plant, so part of the fund goes towards admin, part goes towards sewer, and the one below in four eleven, the one twenty-three fourteen, is for the Frazier Equipment at the fire station.
And when does their contract come up to be questioning?
Uh, it's a little under four years.
Okay. Um, the PPL bill shows fifteen thousand with all the lights, you know, for everything throughout the town and stuff like that.
Correct.
Can you get us a report, or if, I'm just requesting a report, if anybody else would like it, for the year?
Yep.
By, by month?
I can get you the amount for the year, yeah.
By month or by?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of my questions.
Anyone else?
I actually don't have a question about the bill, but I, something occurred to me. Do we have a confirmation, if I may ask, a confirmation on the electronic recycling event happening?
Yes.
It's, it's definitely, we are on board?
We are, yep, it is good. They are working on the materials now.
And it's gonna be November?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, and it's definitely scheduled nine to twelve, then?
Ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve, and then it's closed up.
Ten to twelve, Community Center, partner, yep.
I'll definitely be there.
Yep. Yep.
Ten, ten to twelve.
One, once I receive the flyers from them, I will disseminate them.
If I'm not there, Brian will come and get me.
Yep.
Yeah, that's not a long time, so. That's really a short amount of time, so people need to understand. We don't want people to be frustrated, turned away, and they're saying they're done.
Right. Sixty to a hundred people, and then it'd be done.
Right. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any more questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You always have it. Turning next to announcements from Mr. Wellsco.
Alright, two weeks from today is the Jack Ross Parade. Um, as usual, we will have a vehicle in it. Um, it will be a different vehicle this year. We are most likely using the Borough Van due to, um, outside circumstances. Um, so anyone from council that would like to join, myself, um, I welcome you. I know we've had people in the past, so um, anyone that would like to join, just let me know. Um, we will be getting candy, so we can pass it out. Um, but yeah, just shoot me an email, give me a call, if you would like to be part of it. Second thing is, we just found out yesterday, yeah, it was yesterday, that, um, we applied for a grant for two thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents from KMIT, which is our Workman's Comp Group, um, that we did receive it for the purchasing, it's a safety grant for purchasing of barricades and new cones, which are quite expensive. Um, so, and there's no match, so they already sent us the check, we just have to keep the receipts, and so it is big. Rich has been pushing for this for a while, so they were quite happy when we found out.
That's great.
Actually, it's Tuesday.
Congratulations.
How much was that?
Two thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and forty cents.
Yes.
So, uh, the barricades won't be ready for the Jack Ross Parade, but they will be on order. Um, that is the end of my report.
And like you said, our meeting is Wednesday, the sixteenth.
Yes.
Okay? Um, I have a motion for an adjournment. May I have a motion?
Motion adjourned.
By Mr. Hall, is there? Second?
Second.
And Mr. Donahue, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Needing adjourn.